Good evening, everyone. I'm Chairman Scott Lambert, and I'd like to call to order our East Whiteland Township Supervisor Meeting of April 10th, 2024. Can we stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our meeting is being recorded on Zoom. If anyone has any questions in the audience, when they come up to the mic, if you would please talk gladly into it and give your name and address so that everyone can hear your comments. At the board table, I'd like to introduce to my far left is Steve Brown, our manager, Bernadette Kearney, our solicitor, and my right, Vice Chair Richard Orlo, and Peter Fixler, Supervisor on the far right. Starting off with board briefings, we had executive sessions on March 26 at 4:00 to discuss legal personnel and real estate issues, as well as on April 10th this afternoon at 4:30, also discussing legal personnel and real estate issues. Catherine, I'll move over to you with an update on our grant application updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So since the last meeting, I'm pleased to announce that the township has been awarded a $400,000 grant through the multimodal transportation fund. This is for Route 30 improvements specifically targeted to the Route 352 and 30 intersection. And so we'll continue to work on putting together engineering plans specific to that intersection. So we're going to be talking more about that in the next few months.
Are there any large pending grant applications that we should be aware of?
The other pending application is we did submit a DCNR grant for acquisition of what we're referring to as the Schiffer WCU Foundation property, and the request on that one is 1.825 million. And this would be used as matching funds for the Chester County grant, which was submitted a few months ago.
Great. Thank you for that update. Moving on, Steve, if you can give you an update on the Sustainability Summit?
Thank you, Scott. This is at least the second year that the Chester County Planning Commission is hosting what they call the Sustainability Summit for homeowners' associations. It takes place Tuesday, April 30th at 6:00 PM in person at the CCIU on Boot Road in Downingtown, and there's also a Zoom option. And again, this is for all homeowners' associations that are interested in the topic of sustainability. They do have a program established. They're going to be talking about how to create an environmental sustainability committee within the HOA, creating a green plan for the community, transitioning to clean energy, strategies for planting and maintaining healthy trees and woodlands, solar power for HOAs and their residents, and then what they're calling the Sustainable Landscaping Difference. So it sounds interesting to me. I don't live in an HOA, otherwise I may attend. But we told the county that we would help get the word out, and so that's what tonight's announcement is about, and we will also post it on our website and on our Facebook page.
As you mentioned HOA, I'll mention out to some people probably at home at this point in time, if they pick up this on a Zoom, is we've got a couple HOAs that are going to provide us with some information on emails so that we can get information to them as quickly and as efficiently as possible. So for anybody out there, if you can start pulling those Excel spreadsheets, that would be real helpful for us. And Zach, I'll turn it over to you to give us some information on finishing up our survey for zoning.
Sure. Yeah, more of a public service announcement. The survey's still open. Please go on and complete it if you haven't already. We're up to about 200 responses. Seventy-seven percent of those are residents, 25% work in the township, 50% own in the township, and 8.7% own or operate a business in the township. So please complete the survey. We'll do one more push before we close it, but that will be in the next couple of weeks.
Larry, if you can give us a park and rec update. I know there's a lot going on and going forward. There's a lot of activity.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so parks and recs has been busy. My first few months here at East Whiteland has been extremely busy in trying to get some things off the ground. First and foremost, we had our first ever egg hunt event on Saturday, March 30th, was a huge success. Over 400 people in attendance. We had over 8,000 eggs go in a matter of minutes. We had our first ever, I think, partnership with Immaculata. So they had a great turnout, a great event. This is just going to be the beginning of us working with them to bring bigger and better events to their properties and utilizing that partnership to expand. We worked with police, Public Works, fire, volunteer fire, and just made this event happen. It was really an interdepartmental success. Partnering with GVCO, we got some volunteers from that local high school, and there's some small kinks to work out, things to work on, but we can definitely grow this and make this event better for next year. And I think that turnout just proves that there is a desire for this kind of community engagement. Moving forward, we have our free women's self-defense class here in the township building on April 18th. That's next week. Spots are limited, but it is free. If you know anybody who might be interested in joining that, they can register on our website. Thanks to Public Works, we also just completed the rehabilitation of our volleyball court at Battle of the Clouds. It looks fantastic. If you haven't gotten a chance to walk over there yet, all new sand, new nets. It is really just a great amenity and such an improvement from what it was before. I'm looking to get some organized play in there over the next couple of months, so to be determined about that. Some updates on summer camp, which is our first year of registration on our new platform, and it went fairly smoothly. We were able to actually increase camp numbers to about 125, so about a 25% increase in camp numbers, and that allowed both residents and non-residents to apply. Moving on, we have our summer concert series coming up. The dates for those are Wednesday, May 22nd, Wednesday, June 19th, Wednesday, July 17th, and Wednesday, August 14th. For the May show, we are having Dalton and the Sheriffs. They are doing a Zac Brown and Zac Brian tribute night, so a big old country music night. Juneteenth is featuring Ron and the Hip Tones, that kind of Philly soul band, and Adichu, which is funk and soul and R&B. It's a nine-piece band, so it's going to be really exciting. July 17th, we're still working to finalize an act, but we're almost there. And finally, on August 14th, we have Best Friends Girl, which is a tribute band to the band Cars. And finally, last but not least, we have our summer movie night on Friday, August 30th, and we are confirmed to screen Kung Fu Panda 4. And that's all I have. Kung Fu Panda 4 on Friday, August 30th.
So we will be in conflict on August 14th with our board meeting and the show?
Yeah, that was a conflict that had to be resolved because of the act that came through that they didn't have availability.
Okay. Larry, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is kind of a, maybe a repeat of an update from last one from me pertaining to the Route 30 project. We have revisited the scope of the work and have downsized to some degree. We still remain with close to $6 million worth of grant money that we're going to be utilizing, but it seems like we're going to be focused on probably the 352 Route 30 corridor and running from there to Church Road with sidewalks, and that area would probably be the first area that we're going to focus on at this point in time. Still not totally finalized, but that's kind of where we're looking at at this point in time. We've gotten some further support from DVRPC, which could maybe help us generate some more grant funding in the future, but in the meantime, we'll keep plugging along and keep you in the loop on that. And Steve, if you want to give us a brief overview on the 2023 accomplishments for the township?
Yeah, thank you, Scott. I will not be subjecting anyone to what I did, was it two months ago, where I went into great detail regarding accomplishments of the past year, 2023. There's a lot going on in East Whiteland, and I got maybe a little excited about it, and so I shared a lot. But there's a lot that goes on here that people don't know about and I think should know about, so I did go on a little bit, but won't tonight. I did prepare a much shorter version of the report, and this report is going to be posted online, and I guess we could share it on social media. Scott gave me a couple revisions to it that I'll make, and then that will be the final product. And so that's it. Scott, I have to thank you. You prepared a similar document for 2022 accomplishments, and that provided the impetus for me to want to do it this year, and we will continue to do it moving forward. And I think it's an important document for the board, the public, and for our staff to see what actually came and is done in the course of a year's time.
So again, social media will be a viewing vehicle for that. I'll also say that some of our local legislators are always interested in seeing these reports to see what we're doing in Chester County, as well on state level. Moving on to board motions, I will turn over 3A here for appointments. Greg Lewis, if you can lead us on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the recent appointment in the Department of Fire and Emergency Services of an Assistant Fire Marshal that went to Daniel Matthews, that opened up a full-time firefighter EMT vacancy. So I'm pleased to announce tonight that firefighter, part-time firefighter EMT Carl Weisbecker was selected to fill that position. Carl comes to us full-time as a firefighter EMT from the Radnor Fire Company. He's surrounded here tonight with his wife Shannon, the new son Landon, and various other family members. So if I could, I'll ask Carl to come up. Carl's assigned to the C Platoon under the direction of Captain Bechtel, and his first full-time shift was actually on Sunday, April 7th. So congratulations and welcome, these folks.
Thank you. Informally, I just want to add that we found out one of our police, one of our newer police officers, John Albany, ended up having a baby Monday morning, his second. And if he's out there, congratulations on that. Welcome. I think it was a young daughter, I believe, but anyway, congratulations. Catherine, I guess one of the main events is our open space tax referendum discussion.
Yeah. So the potential action before the board tonight is to consider advertising an ordinance, and this is to authorize a referendum for the general election to implement an open space tax to purchase and preserve available land. Tonight's action is only to advertise the ordinance, which would have a public hearing at the May board meeting. If the ordinance passes in May, the question of if an open, excuse me, the question of an open space tax would then be placed on the November general election for a vote. Does the board have any questions?
No, no. I know that this has been a topic that has been raised often from the public, so we are responding to that concern and giving this opportunity to the public to voice their opinion directly.
I have no questions.
I'll also add that we're one of the few communities out there that does not, at this point in time, have an open space referendum for this. And as we've talked about, some issues coming up or some properties that are coming up, the timing of this is very good for us to acquire some large parcels of land. So we'll keep you updated on that. So I guess if we can have, any questions, Don, out in the public at this point in time? Is there anyone even on Zoom tonight?
Um. Three, four, five.
Yep, all right. Any questions from the public? Rich, would you like to make a motion to advertise?
Make a motion to advertise ordinance 359 regarding the open space tax referendum.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes. And if anyone wants to take a look at some of the information, it's on our website at this point in time, so you can review the information in the event you have any questions next month. Zach, if you want to lead us with the forever-changing special events ordinance?
It's evolving, which is a good thing. So this is a zoning ordinance amendment to apply some, let's just say, some parameters to special events in the township, would require a permit to have one of those events, which would then be reviewed primarily by John Matea, our zoning officer, but also among other staff members of other departments to make sure that the, you know, the events are being appropriately managed. If they need restrooms, let's say, for example, per the code, per the building code, they would be required to have restrooms. I want to make sure that their parking situation is okay, they're in need for emergency services. So that's really the impetus for it. I won't, don't need to run through anything in detail. Happy to answer any questions if you like. What we'll do is, this would be in a position to be voted on at next month following the hearing. At that time, we'll also have for the board sort of a draft application form, which kind of spells out more detail, and a proposal for like a fee structure, which we could then amend our fee schedule. I know the board had expressed some interest in keeping the fee low, of course, but also making sure that it's low for sort of our institutional, educational, cultural groups, things like that. So we will have something for you in May.
Okay. One of the things I'd like to reiterate that Zach has indicated here is that this special events ordinance is not a moneymaker. It's more intended to have us be aware, and our departments be aware of activities, police, fire, traffic. So part of it and part of the permit is that need to keep us informed so that the rest of the community is not impacted negatively in any shape or form. So that's the primary purpose.
Yep, and just, this question's come up a couple of times, too. Will the township follow it? And the answer is yes. We'll go through the same process for ourselves, you know, checking in with the various departments.
So Larry, we'll be filling out a lot of permits? Good man, Larry. Okay. Any comments from the public? Don, anyone out there?
Yeah.
All right. Peter, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Like to make a motion. Lost my place here.
3C?
3C, thank you. To ratify the advertisement for the zoning, for the advertisement, correct, of the zoning ordinance amendment for special events.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Catherine, if you can give us some information here on the ADA improvements for Sidley and Phoenixville Pike?
So this is a joint project with Charlestown to install left-turn lanes primarily on Sidley, Phoenixville Pike intersection, and it's been progressing over the last few months. We've previously talked with the board about this. And the updates for tonight are that we recently hosted an impacted residence meeting for those in the project vicinity. There are some easements that are needed, so it was targeted at those folks, and also to solicit feedback and share the plans. A comment was received during that meeting requesting the township re-look at pedestrian crossings, which are not currently part of the scope, and that would include ADA improvements. The Township Traffic Engineer is here tonight with a brief presentation and will update, and an update as we proceed closer to bidding, which we're hoping to do within the next few months.
Good evening. Chris Williams with Bowman. So we're going to walk you through reasonably quickly a presentation. This is essentially identical to the presentation that we gave to the impacted residents right in the immediate vicinity of the intersection. And I think at that meeting, which was held in December, I think we had 100% attendance from the residents that are in the immediate vicinity, which is great. So, next slide. So we know where the project is located. It's located, it's the intersection of Phoenixville Pike and Sidley Road, and then Yellow Springs Road on the north side. Yellow Springs Road continues into Charlestown Township. The yellow line is the border between East Whiteland and Charlestown Township. So the intersection is solely within East Whiteland, but it is approached, it is being approached as a partnership project with Charlestown. Next slide. So a little bit of background. So the reason this is a partnership project with Charlestown is the traffic signal at that location was really installed by Charlestown Township in connection with the Charlestown Oaks development up the hill on Yellow Springs Road. Need for improvements at this intersection have really been longstanding. It was most recently formally identified as part of the 2018 East Whiteland roadway sufficiency analysis. Again, it's a partnership project between the two municipalities. We have project support from the Great Valley School District. We did receive about $700,000 in funding in a joint application, a grant application to the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Financing Authority. Both municipalities partnered together on the grant application, and we did receive $700,000 worth of funding, which is very helpful. And then the matching funds for the project are being shared between East Whiteland and Charlestown. So just a little bit, little bit more background. So these are two township-owned roads. Both roads are municipal-owned. However, once you cross, as you're heading sort of northeast on Phoenixville Pike, and once you cross into Charlestown Township, Phoenixville Pike becomes a state road at that point. But at least within the limits of the intersection, Phoenixville Pike is a township road, and then, of course, Yellow Springs Road and Sidley Road are also township roads. Phoenixville Pike, as we all know, is a key route between Route 401 and Route 29. Phoenixville Pike provides key access to the Pennsylvania Turnpike, Great Valley Corporate Center, quarries that we have in the area, major developments, Office Park. So it's a very important roadway. And also, it is the gateway to the Great Valley High School and Middle School campus located just to the south. So again, well, existing conditions, right? We know what the intersection looks like today. Here's an aerial image of what the intersection looks like today. Essentially, it's the intersection of two two-lane roads. We do have a separate right turn lane coming southbound on Yellow Springs Road out of Charlestown Township, but otherwise it is two two-lane roads, and we have a traffic signal. Next slide. So a little bit more background on existing conditions. The section of Phoenixville Pike, as you head to the left of the intersection towards the Great Valley School District Campus, that section of road shown in blue is posted at 35 miles per hour. And then to the right side of the intersection, the road is posted at 45 miles per hour. In yellow, it shows the lane configuration. We have single lane approaches on three of the four legs, and then southbound, Yellow Springs Road coming out of Charlestown Township, it's a two-lane approach with a separate right turn lane and then a shared through-left turn lane. We do have a 15 mile an hour speed limit zone in front of the School District Campus to the west of the intersection. And then we have a truck restriction on Sidley Road south of the intersection. So just a little bit of, little bit of orientation as to the existing intersection. Next slide. So let's talk about traffic conditions and really why we're here today. So we have a history of congestion at this location, especially during school peak periods when the middle school and the high school is letting out. This intersection does see congestion. Why do we have congestion? Well, we have a lack of turning lanes. What would solve that would be the addition of left-turn lanes on Phoenixville Pike. It's also a safety benefit to have the addition of the left-turning lanes. We also have heavy truck volumes through this intersection. We have 1,298 trucks per day, which is about 10% of the total volume. That is high. I'll say most roads are probably more in the 3% to 5% daily accounting of trucks. We have about double that. We have about 10% trucks per day using this roadway. And speeding is an issue. Part of that is due to the fact that this intersection is really that transition point between the 35 zone and the 45 zone, and as you're coming from the northeast through the 45 zone, it's not uncommon to have trucks traveling upwards of 50 miles per hour as they approach the intersection. So what are the issues? Congestion, speeding, safety, truck traffic, and stormwater management. We've been hearing for a long time about issues with stormwater management at this intersection. That was never the intent of the project. It was really to make it, it was really to address safety and congestion, but this is also an opportunity to solve a longstanding stormwater issue as part of this project, and so we are, we are doing that as part of this project. Excellent. So what are the proposed improvements? Next slide. So again, this is really just a colorized version of what the intersection looks like today overlaid on top of an aerial. The blue lines represent the right-of-way in terms, in terms of the blue lines that parallel the roadways, and then you have blue lines that are representative of the property lines for the properties surrounding the intersection. But again, pretty straightforward intersection, signalized essentially the intersection of two two-lane roads. Next slide. So this is a layout of what the intersection would look like with the improvements, and we'll walk through what those improvements are. So next slide. So first of all, we are adding a new westbound left turn lane, so coming from Route 29, you can see the width of Phoenixville Pike. We're widening the road somewhat to accommodate a westbound left turn lane for traffic turning left, wishing to turn left onto Sidley Road. Next slide. And then mirroring that, we have an eastbound left turn lane for traffic turning left into Yellow Springs Road. And this is really a very predominant left turn movement for the school district. When the high school and the middle school lets out that left turn lane, that movement sees a lot of traffic. Next slide. We also are showing a new right turn lane. We also are showing a new right turn lane on Sidley Road. So northbound on Sidley Road, today we have a heavy right turn volume there. So this is an opportunity to provide a right turn lane to accommodate that heavy volume as well. Next slide. So we are making some upgrades to the traffic signal. Not quite as many upgrades as we originally anticipated. So mostly the upgrades we're making are more operational in nature. We will be adding left turn phasing, green arrow, for example, to more effectively and safely accommodate the left turn traffic. At one point, we were looking to totally replace the traffic signal equipment. We've scaled that back to manage costs on the project, and we've been able to modify the scope of the design improvements and the geometric improvements in order to preserve the signal poles and mast arms in their present location. So we will not be replacing those, but we will be making operational changes to the traffic signal. We are looking to change the speed limit. So again, we have a kind of a, it's, this is a transition point between a 35 zone and a 45 zone, and that does create some confusion, and it does encourage speeding for anybody coming from Route 29. So we will be extending the 35 mile an hour zone to the east of the intersection so that hopefully traffic is traveling at a more manageable speed before they approach the intersection and then hopefully traveling closer to the post, 35 posted speed limit as they travel through the intersection. Next slide. And then lastly, we will be providing stormwater improvements as part of the project. So the project will include, so the southwest corner, the lower kind of left corner of the intersection, that property has really been subject to years of stormwater runoff. So you know, if you can visualize the topography, the north side of the road, the north side of Phoenixville Pike sits higher. Stormwater comes down Yellow Springs Road, comes out of Charlestown Township. It crosses into East Whiteland Township. A lot of that water is flowing into that southwest corner. That property on the lower left corner has had to deal with a lot of stormwater issues. The township, I don't know when it was, several years ago, did install a bituminous asphalt rolled curb on the intersection to try and manage that stormwater, which has absolutely helped. But we can do more. So this project will include new upright curbing on that corner, as well as the addition of stormpipe and inlets to manage stormwater.
Chris, can you tell me if that stormwater management will impact? I don't know if you know it specifically, but the house at One Hayes Road, which would be the second house west of the intersection?
So we have.
I get a lot of, I get a lot of emails from that property about stormwater problems.
Yeah, so the project includes all new curbing along that section of Phoenixville Pike to capture that stormwater so it doesn't flow onto the property, and the addition of stormpipe and inlets on that side of Phoenixville Pike. So that will be an improved condition. Next slide. So that's just a high-level overview of the project, but I mean, we're accomplishing quite a bit with this project, and it'll be a real benefit to the intersection. We do need easements. We need a total of three easements. And really, it was because of that that we met with the residents back in December. What are easements and why do we need easements? So there are improvements that are, well, let me take a step back. The physical footprint of the improvements is located within the road right-of-way. So that's a good thing. But we do need easements, mostly temporary easements for construction. We need temporary construction easements from two properties, and then we do need one permanent easement. And we'll walk you through those here. Next slide. Hit the button. So we have an easement, because of the widening, we will be impacting, is that the second property to the left of the intersection on the north side of Phoenixville Pike? We will need to modify their driveway because the road is going to be getting about four feet closer to their property. That's going to affect their driveway. And so we're going to be smoothing out and kind of feathering their driveway into the new edge of road. It's a temporary construction easement just to modify their driveway to match into the new road edge. We're not permanently taking their property. It's not a permanent easement. Similarly, the property closer to the intersection on the north side, it's also a driveway adjustment for the same reason, as well as a little bit of trimming of vegetation. There's trees and shrubbery that's up against the road, and that will be impacted as part of the road widening. And so we will be cutting back some of that vegetation. So those are the temporary construction easements. And then hit the button one more time. So there is a permanent easement needed on the southeast corner, and that's part of the Great Valley Corporate Center. And that's an easement for traffic signal equipment.
That telephone pole gonna have to be moved?
So we actually only have one utility pole that's being relocated, and it's a fairly minor pole. It's mostly a support pole. We originally were relocating multiple poles. Through the project process, we actually modified and sort of right-sized the project to minimize impacts to utility poles, as well as to minimize impacts to trees. If you can visualize what Sidley Road looks like on the south side of the intersection, there's a row of evergreen trees on the right side of the road. And so we actually modified the scope of the improvements to preserve those trees as well and to minimize impacts to utility poles. So there's not much in the way of impacts to those facilities. Next slide. So that's an overview of the project. What are the next steps? So we do, so what, one of the things we do need to accomplish tonight is we do need to decide. Let me take a step back. When we met with the residents, as Catherine indicated, there was a question about providing pedestrian facilities through the intersection. Right now, there are, there are pedestrian facilities, more or less. There are pedestrian push buttons to cross Phoenixville Pike. But there are not pedestrian facilities in the way that we would traditionally design and build them today if we were doing a pedestrian improvement project. What do I mean by that? It doesn't have the latest and greatest technology for pedestrian signals. It doesn't have the hand man or the countdown timers. We don't have today's standard of crosswalks. And most notably, we don't have ADA ramps at the intersection. We could do that. We've talked about. So when we met with the residents, they asked as to whether or not the project will include pedestrian, improved pedestrian crossings at the intersection. This project does not. When it was scoped out, when we applied for our grants, the project purpose was really to provide the left turn lanes and to address the stormwater management and to provide the right turn lane on Sidley Road. We talked about providing the pedestrian facilities, but to do so would expand the scope and the cost of the project. And it would really exceed, the project cost would really start to exceed what is, what would have been, it probably would have impacted our competitiveness for the grant that we applied for. So the pedestrian crossings were not included in the project. We talked about it. We do think that there is a future opportunity to provide pedestrian crossings, improved pedestrian crossings at the intersection. But when we spoke about it with township staff and with Charlestown Township staff, the thought was that can be a separate project. We can provide upgraded pedestrian facilities at the intersection as part of a separate project, perhaps in connection with looking at additional pedestrian facilities. We don't have any sidewalk leading to the intersection. If we're going to make pedestrian upgrades to the intersection, perhaps the time to do that would be as part of a larger project where we're also providing sidewalk along Phoenixville Pike, actually connecting to the school district property. So we believe that it is eventually a good project, but it just wasn't feasible to include it within the grant application for this project. So the initial thought was to defer any pedestrian upgrades and any improved pedestrian crossings. However, when we met with the residents in December, they asked this question. Are we providing improved pedestrian crossings? So that's why we're here this evening, is to ask the board whether they are interested in expanding the project to include two pedestrian crossings. Go back a few slides, and I can kind of point out, that's fine. We can work off of this one. So if we were to provide improved pedestrian crossings, we would do so on the west leg of Phoenixville Pike, crossing from the north side of Phoenixville Pike on the Charlestown side down to the East Whiteland side on the southwest corner. And then we would provide a pedestrian crossing across Sidley Road on the southern leg of the intersection. And then with that would be crosswalks, improved pedestrian signals, countdown timers, and ADA ramps. To add that to the project, it's about $100,000 addition to the project. Was never a part of the original scope. It wasn't contemplated in the initial grant application. So if we are to add that now, that would be an out-of-pocket cost to the township. So that's why we're here this evening, is to seek the township or to address with the board whether there's interest in adding that to the project at this time or whether we put a pin in that as a future project to provide enhanced pedestrian crossings in connection with perhaps looking at other pedestrian facilities leading to and from the intersection so that it really goes somewhere. So that's the, I think, the question before the board. Now, should we not add the two pedestrian crossings? What will exist will be no different than what's there today. So the signal is timed with adequate green time so that pedestrians can cross, right? We're providing, the green time is sufficient if a pedestrian is going to cross, and they, if they're doing it today, like, we're not changing what's there today in terms of a pedestrian's ability to cross. But what this project isn't doing is we're not making it any better. We're not adding additional infrastructure. So that is the question. We could provide the two crossings, the ramps, the signal heads. It's an added cost of approximately $100,000. And so that's the question before the board.
If I can issue and comment at the same time. North into Charlestown, there are no sidewalks coming from the townhouse community up there, correct?
That's correct.
Right. So there's no safe walkability from there at this point in time? And that's not our responsibility. That's Charlestown.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Second is that there are probably only six houses that are directly along that area. And I believe that none of them have any more children living there going to Great Valley High School. Perhaps the one on the corner of Sidley, they might have a young child perhaps, but I'm not 100% sure. I know, in fact, the others do not. So there's no really large population of students in that vicinity that are going to be walking to the school is my understanding of everything there. So I think if we had more of a volume of students going and utilizing that intersection, I would seriously consider it, but I don't think at this point in time there is. But maybe one, I've heard one student that might.
Yeah, I'll add to that, that when we did our traffic studies for this project, we counted the intersection. Now, again, we don't, we count one day. I mean, that's the way this business works. We count one day. And the day that we counted over several hours, six hours, we didn't count any pedestrians. We did hear from the residents back in December that there are the occasional, there is the occasional pedestrian. Sounds like it's largely a student who that day chooses to walk to school, and they're walking along the front yards of the homes. I don't know that it's a lot of students doing it, but the residents told us that it does happen. I guess we've also heard anecdotally that maybe the cross-country team, they may run through the intersection. I don't know that they're stopping at intersections and pushing buttons anyway. But we didn't, we haven't observed that. But I'm just letting you know what we're hearing anecdotally from the residents in the area. All that to say, the idea of upgrading the pedestrian equipment, at some point, it may be a good idea. Was the opinion of both townships and the staff that it would be, it would be an ideal step-two project as part of a larger pedestrian system upgrade.
And I think most compelling is the Yellow Springs Road is really not a walkable road. To put crossings there may just attract people to walk down a unsafe walkable road. It's really windy, steep. It's pretty tough.
I wouldn't want to walk that road. It is a narrow, it is a windy and steep road. It would be difficult to safely walk along that roadway. Absolutely.
And to follow what the other supervisor is saying, at this time, I don't see it in the budget to be fiscally responsible, go forward with those improvements that are outside the scope of the work proposed. That's my opinion.
Yeah, and I believe Catherine also spoke with Charlestown Township, and I don't think they had, there was no support from Charlestown as well to expand the scope of the project.
That's right. Yeah, Charlestown does not want to participate in the cost sharing on this item at this time. But in the future, they're interested in taking a larger look at the corridor.
Zach, if you want to go back to the next step slide, and then that's my last slide. So I just wanted to provide the board with a little bit of an update on where we go from here. So we are ready to submit plans to PennDOT. This has been a joint venture with our office and Charlestown's traffic engineer working together on the plans. We have not yet submitted to PennDOT. We wanted to address this question. And now that it sounds like we have direction to not add those pedestrian crossings, the next step will be to submit plans to PennDOT for their review. We can do so between the months of April and May. We would be in a position to submit. More likely now that if we're not adding those crosswalks, we would be able to submit sooner than later. A next step beyond that, after we submit those plans, we will be looking to schedule a site meeting with the residents. We, when we met with them in December, we agreed that we would meet with them on-site to follow up, have a follow-up discussion with them on the improvements and the needed easements. We hope to obtain easements in the June-July timeframe. We hope to obtain PennDOT approval in the July timeframe. We would be back to the Board of Supervisors probably in the May-June timeframe to authorize bidding. We hope to bid and award the bid and give notice to proceed in roughly an August-September timeframe. Instruction could begin in the fall. With, I'll say, depending on the timeframe of the contractor, we may be able to see most of the work, roadwork completed in 2024. But it's likely that, and very possible, that that construction could extend into spring of 2025, depending on, you know, we need to work with the contractor on that.
Chris, is there any way in this timeframe that this work could be done in August, early or late August? Because here, September comes around, and that's a major intersection, and we're going to be doing work with the school, the traffic, trucks. Is there any way we can adjust that or try to get, get the bid to complete the work by Labor Day of this year?
It would not be possible. If you wanted to focus the work in the summer, we'd be looking to do it in summer of 2025.
It's because of the approvals time from PennDOT?
PennDOT approval, easements that are needed from the residents. I mean, that, all of that will take time. And then putting bid documents together, advertising bids, awarding those bids. I mean, it's, there's a, there's a lot to do. I mean, it's, there's not a lot to do, but it, what's left to do, there's a process that has to be followed, and that process takes time. And, you know, should construction occur during the school year, obviously? And this did come up with the residents, we can look to adjust the contractor's schedule to not allow, you know, typically, construction on state road projects have to occur between 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM only. 3:00 PM or 4:00 PM? 3:00 PM, I think it is. We can look to maybe modify that so as not to coincide with the school district's dismissal period. So maybe, maybe in this case, we don't allow construction after 2:00 PM. So we would look at those things. And then we would maintain traffic flow, maintain, you know, one lane in each direction so that traffic would remain open and passable. So those are things that we can work out with, when we select a contractor.
Yeah, the school dismisses students at 2:30 over there.
So we can look to modify the allowable construction timing. Potentially, at least during the heavy portions of construction, maybe to not overlap with the school dismissal period.
So this project could take four or five months.
For construction?
Yeah.
I would, at this point, I would estimate a six-month construction schedule. But I think the heavy construction would be done in a much reduced time period. You're going to need more time for signal modifications and, you know, landscaping adjustments and those sort of things. But I would estimate an overall start-to-finish of six months, at least as of today.
Final paving couldn't happen until spring after the winter, right?
Correct. We might be able to get binder course down potentially before the winter, but then you would delay final paving until the spring. So those are the types of reasons it may extend. Unless we have a warm, a warm winter. Which, we've had some of those.
I'm thinking in terms of the timing, the impact it's going to have on school and traffic along there. I just assume my two cents would be. I just assume my two cents would be to push it off to the summer of '25, when school is, is ended.
The construction part of it, all the approvals of.
Yeah, get everything lined up with the construction during that period of time.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Construction wouldn't occur within that three-month summer period, but the heavy work likely could compare, could occur within that summer season.
Well, I'd like to see the work, the construction work not occur during a period of time where we have the highest traffic volume along that road with school.
Well, we can, we can look at that.
Could you maybe take a look at that?
We can try to tighten up the schedule.
Provided Rich and Peter are agreement and staff is in agreement to that, without causing other problems.
What I would say is if we're making that decision now, I would still try to go to bids soon and give the contractor ample notice that this may have an aggressive construction expectation and allow them to prepare and mobilize so that they could complete their work within a three-month period. John, does that sound reasonable in your opinion? Right.
That's fine. John, do you, do you, from your standpoint, with what you guys end up doing over there, do you see any problems? And I'll ask Zach the same question with all the other projects that are going on. Do you see any problems with pushing this out to, to summer '25?
It's probably a good plan. We're to get it out to bid in a timely manner, follow this plan, and the contractor knows and they can be prepared. You have a better chance of getting a good price and getting locked in early. The problem is, the more you go, prices.
Sure, sure. All right. Zach, do you have any concerns?
No, I agree with everything that John and Chris have said. I can't think of anything specific that would be, you know, in addition to the school impacted by this. But, yeah, I think we should kind of sharpen our pencils on that. I wouldn't want to commit to like a fitting a six-month project into three months. Like, sounds great, I like it, but, well, we should probably sharpen our pencils on that.
Yeah, we need, we're not, I don't think we're totally agreeing with, I agree with the concept and, and the, the, we'll make every effort to meet that expectation. We need to look at the schedule, sharpen our pencil, see if we think it's feasible. We, we will absolutely strive for that. The goal would be to do all the in-road work during that three-month summer season. And then anything, you know, off-road, driveway adjustments perhaps, or landscaping replacements, or signal modifications. If there's anything off the edge of road, you know, that we can do that would extend beyond that three-month summer season, I think that would have to occur. But we'll have to, we'll put a finer pencil to the schedule.
Yeah, good points.
Would the, would the grant be affected in any way? Is there a time on the grant or we'd be okay doing it next? I just want to make sure.
No, I, I, no, I think we're fine on that. That's a very good question. I will have to follow up on that. I think we're okay, but we'll have to follow up on that. I think if we, yeah, let me leave it at that and we'll circle back. We'll work with township staff and let you know.
Okay. Don, anyone out there in the internet? Any comments from public? Peter, Rich, any other things?
None, so go ahead, do the best you can.
None, yeah. So I will go ahead and make an amendment or amendment, a motion to approve the project intersection without any mod, without any modifications for ADA at this point in time. And try to push out the project until 2025. Do I have a second?
Oh, second?
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and passes. And just keep us in the loop and if we need to make modifications. Yeah, okay. Thank you, Chris. And can I ad lib a question for you? The dangerous walkway from Bren Airin over to the high school. Any, any update that you can think of as far as that sidewalk project that I know is mirrored in grant funding?
Yeah, so the Moores Road sidewalk project, we are stuck in PennDOT review at this point. We're kind of a little bit at the mercy of PennDOT. We've got environmental review. I, I think we're in for environmental. I think we have safety approval. We have some of our approvals. We don't have all of our approvals. We don't have right-of-way plan approval yet. So it is with PennDOT. Once we get out of PennDOT, we're waiting to hear from them. Once we get out, get kind of to that next step in the process, we will be working more closely with the school district on some coordination items that we need with them. And then at that point, we'll have a much clearer picture on schedule and next steps. And we'd be happy to come back to a meeting and provide an update at that time, if you like.
Yeah, okay. You know, that's obviously an area where there's substantial amount of students coming from Bren Airin, walking a dangerous road and crossing 401 that I know you've been working on for quite a while.
Yep.
But do you think it could be potentially completed by next September?
September of '24? No.
Five?
Maybe, yeah, that's, that's a possibility.
Okay. Yeah.
Yes, September of 2025 is a possibility.
For five? For the next school year? Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, moving on to planning and development with Zach. If you can take us through this part of the agenda.
The fun voyage of the planning and development section. So first item here, subdivision number one of 23. It's for two-lot subdivision on Old Valley Road off of Backton Hill. Preliminary slash final, since it's a minor subdivision, we've prepared a resolution for the board. It's mostly boilerplate because it is a sort of a simple project, but there's some project-specific conditions in there as well about traffic fees and things. Otherwise, this is pretty straightforward. It's in a position to be voted on. Happy to answer any questions.
I have none.
I have none either.
Wow. All right. Do I, do I hear a motion?
Any public comments on this project? Okay, sure. Peter, you want to make another mention?
Sure, no problem. I'd like to make a motion to rent. Yeah, I know anyone, are we approving?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, yeah. Threaten the decision of an approval for SD-01-2023 for 99 Old Valley Road for the preliminary final subdivision application.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and passes. So we'll see you the next time. You're welcome. 482?
Next item is for a request for waiver of land development for a project at Three Country View. Very limited scope of improvements. The applicant is here to give a little overview, if you'd like. It's for, it's at Three Country View there, the corporate center off of like, sort of just south of Great Valley Parkway on the east side.
Hi, good evening. Gina Gerber here on behalf of the applicant. This is an existing three-story office building. It's got landscaping improvements. You're all pretty familiar with it. The waiver for land development is related to some site improvements on this project. They're very limited. They're introducing a new access area on the property that is going to provide a little bit more street visibility for this project. I will let Joseph Butler from Workspace Property Trust tell you a little bit about why they are proposing these improvements. But we're asking for a waiver of land development just due to the very limited nature of what's being proposed. There are four new parking spaces that are going to be in front of the building as part of this new access drive. There is an area in the rear of the building, kind of on the eastern side of the plan that you're looking up on the screen here, where 35 parking spaces are going to be removed and a stormwater management facility is going to be put in. There is a good amount of landscaping that's going to be put in with this as well. They are proposing some lower bushes, shrubs, landscaping, garden area along the entrance drive because they are really trying to create some sort of visual interest on this particular property. The tree replacements are proposed to occur mostly to the northern and western side of the property. This is something that their, the resolution addresses. We are, we are going to need to be doing some tree replacement, but we would like to do that with the flexibility of your landscape consultant as we go in and we see what is going to fit in that area and what would be appropriate. I know your landscape consultant did offer some suggestions as to replacement species. We have no objection to that. What was suggested seems fine with us. But that is going to be a work in progress as these improvements get underway. Before we go into anything specific, I did want to give Joseph an opportunity to just give you all a little bit of a taste of why they're proposing this.
What are you doing?
So this is more to create an arrival in this building. It's in the back, the main entrance of this building is in the back. So it's kind of weird, you pull up Country View Road, you see the building and you see a bunch of grass. And then you got to go around the building and the main entrance to the building is in the rear. So this is part of a multimillion-dollar project that we're going to be doing for this facility. This, the tenant, the only tenants in this building now will be leaving at the end of 2025. And this building will be 100% big. So we're trying to, you know, put ourselves out there, best possible. We're going to be, you know, part of the amenities, we're putting in fitness center, conferencing centers. This is everything that you need to have on your sheet to even get a tenant at your door. So that's why we're asking for this waiver of land development. Just, just to make it look better, make it, give it a sense of arrival. Thank you.
Couple of comments in the review letter that I just wanted to bring up this evening because I think they're pertinent to this particular project and the resolution that you all are going to be considering this evening. One of those items is sidewalks. The Bowman review letter did indicate that the proposed sidewalk was not currently compliant with the width requirement of the township and the verge requirements. We're agreeable to amending the plan to make sure that that can be complied with. We have our site engineer, Rick Stratton, from CVE here this evening as well to talk to specifics. And we'll be updating the plan to make sure that the design details that have been requested in the Arrow review letter are included as well prior to permit stage. One of the things we were hoping you may consider is deferring the installation of the sidewalk until such time as the property to the west is developed. So at this time, the property to the west is vacant. I think it was most recently approved as like a temporary beer garden project, but there's not currently any development on that particular project. We're hopeful that going forward, that that will be a development. And at that time, we'd be more than happy to put this sidewalk in which would connect to that particular property. But that doesn't make a whole lot of sense to put it in at this point in time. So if the board would be willing to defer the sidewalk installation, I think that that would make a little bit more sense for this project. Mr. Lambert?
If I can refer, Zach, I think, I think there have been a few projects where that has, has occurred.
Yes.
Yeah. Is there any timeframe that you put on there to, for outside?
Yeah, generally what we do is.
Two years, three years, five years, whatever, if nothing happens?
Yeah, generally, the way we set it up is that within one year of being put on notice by the township, they have to construct it. So we add a plan note, there's a condition of approval, and basically that's the trigger. And I think to Gina's point, in this case, the trigger would be, you know, maybe a land development being approved at the property next door or something like that. If, if the board is open to it, this is not something we discussed previously, but like, we can make for a nice trigger that way, if the board is open to it.
Just wondering kind of what was standard in, in other situations that we've encountered. And based, you know, every one of these situations are a little bit different depending on the property surrounding it. Peter, Rich, do you have any concern with those, that, that timeframe?
Oh, I'm fine with that. And it makes sense to add this to the front. So it looks like, looks like you're coming in the front. You still have to go around back to park, but that's where the building is and you're not going to pick it up and move it.
I'm afraid not.
I know.
I would say just if the board is open to that request. Generally, we include that as a condition of approval. We've by written this condition a dozen times. If the board is amenable, I would amend, I would revise the revision or the resolution rather to include that.
We would be agreeable to that.
Okay, I think that's agreeable at our end as well.
That sounds good.
The other item I wanted to raise is with regard to one of the comments with regard to the landscaping. As I indicated, most of the replacement trees are going to be located along the northern and western property boundary. We are avoiding country drive for the reason that we are really trying to create this visibility in this welcoming area. So we would prefer not to put street trees or high vegetation in that area in order to promote this visibility. We will submit a landscaping idea plan for your township's review prior to installation of any of this. But we just want to make sure that we're all clear on that particular point, that we are not proposing and do not intend to propose any street trees in there.
Sure, I'll, I'll add, I'll add one thing to it, not to muddy the waters, but in the event that, that the, the, the tree replacement numbers are such that you don't and can't find location on your property, we have a program here where we'll just take a credit for those trees and then we utilize those trees in different locations like a park or someplace that has a shortfall. So keep that in mind in terms of, you know, if, if, as you're coming through the landscaping plan, if that makes sense.
Yep, and I think the resolution was written pretty broadly in order to give the township's landscaping consultant a good amount of discretion when we go through that tree replacement process to review and approve all of that. I think that'll work out great. The only other item that I wanted to raise with regard to this particular application, and this is more of an administrative question, because this is a waiver of land development, there is some stormwater going in, but the site improvements are extremely limited. So from the applicant's viewpoint, we did not see a need for doing a financial security posting with regard to the site improvements. If the township would like to require that with regard to the stormwater, we understand. But in light, there's not really a necessarily a provision that would require the applicant to post financial security for all of the site improvements. So we were hoping to make the distinction between site improvements for the stormwater, which would be posted, and then to waive the, any requirement for site improvements for, or, I'm sorry, financial security for any of the site.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that. I mean, all the site improvements of the access way and parking space.
Yeah, it's, it's very limited.
The stormwater is necessary, so sure.
It's essentially paving and curving that we're talking about here.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Bernadette.
Just to make sure I was taking notes, you said the stormwater will be posted?
Yes.
That storm, okay, got it.
We would do a cost estimate for the stormwater improvements and that would be subject to posting of.
It's meaningful with me. Peter?
Everything sounds great.
Again, Zach, do you have any problems?
We just. Oh, no, not on that topic. I was just looking at something here. No, that, I think that's fine. It's a very narrow scope.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you, and.
Can you make a recommendation?
Yeah.
I, I just want to be clear on what I'm saying here. You said Zach too.
Yeah, I was actually just going to ask a question, if you don't mind. Because I think it's the same question you have. Bernadette, so it sounds like there's, we don't have anything in the resolution regarding review of the landscape plan before they plan it? I imagine they'll do a very nice job, but it seems like there's two things here that maybe you would put in a resolution. Is it okay to procedurally? Should we amend it and then, assuming it seems like the board is okay with the concept, ratify it next month? Or there's a couple edits here, it sounds like so.
Bernadette's resolution is section. I regarding their existing, I think we're covered there.
I was going to say the same thing there, right before number two.
Yes, I see that.
So the one, oh, I'm sorry. The one change would be, I think too many of us are on. The one change would be the sidewalk, as I see it.
Correct.
And if you wanted to clarify, we could certainly put in there that the stormwater, the financial security would be posted for the stormwater. So I do believe that was an Al's letter also.
Okay, so I guess just precision, not to overthink this, but is it okay to just make those changes in the board? If the board is okay, I think they are, we know what we're talking about, as long as you guys are okay with it, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I, I think that should be fine. And Gina, you could sign beforehand and they can ratify. Yeah, I, I think that should be fine. And Gina, you could sign beforehand and they can ratify.
So I could, to you, Bernadette, I could read this before I read it. To approve with the postponing of the sidewalk and the proper posting of stormwater or?
Right.
I believe that is correct because the landscaping is covered already in there.
Yeah, I apologize. I was tripping over, I thought there was a zoning comment, which obviously the board doesn't have the authority to sort of waive. That's what was tripping me up. If that's causing any confusion, it's just those two items, financial security, defer all of sidewalk. Okay.
Okay. I'll make a motion then. A motion to approve the waiver of land development for WLD dash fifteen dash twenty twenty-three for three country view. With the postponement of the sidewalk installation. And the proper posting of financial security for storm water management.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're good. You're passed.
Next item, similar, um, this is waiver of land development sixteen of twenty twenty-three for three fifty-eight Technology Drive. They're requesting a waiver of the full blown land development process, as we'll call it, uh, to do some building addition improvements. And I think Gina, you are also representing that applicant as well.
So this is a project for Charles River Laboratory, who is a tenant of the building at three fifty-eight Technology Drive. This is an existing building. They've been operating out of this township building for a number of years. They like their location very much. Um, I don't know if you've seen what is there now, but they do currently have a temporary structure that is providing a corridor connection between two separate areas of the building. There we go. Um, this is what is there now. It's serving its purpose, but they are looking to make this more permanent. So what they are proposing is an approximately three thousand two hundred and fifty-five square foot building addition to create a walkway area, a corridor, if you will, between two separate areas of the property. This will enable staff to traverse between separate areas of the property without going through a clean room area, which is generally part of laboratory use. Um, so this is really just a practical building addition for them. With the removal of some existing impervious, the total increase in impervious coverage here is one thousand nine hundred and eight square feet. So this is a very small change. Mr. Caymans is here with me from Chester Valley Engineers to speak as the project engineer. But I can tell you that he will, he will say that the stormwater management is maybe not so simple as the building addition that is going in. I know he's put a lot of work into this. He's done a lot of testing to make sure that this is going to work. As of right now, the review letters that we've recently received are all will comply items. The only item that I think really requires any sort of discussion this evening is sidewalks, seems to be carrying the day today. I'll turn this over to Mr. Caymans in a minute. Zach, do you mind putting up the other picture? This will give you an idea of what this is going to look like when it's constructed. Much more pleasing than what you're looking at now. But there, there is a comment in the review letter and it is deferred to the township to determine whether or not sidewalks are going to be required as part of this development. The applicant is not proposing them and I'll turn it over to Mr. Caymans to explain practically speaking, why they are not proposed for this particular site. But with that said, this I think is a very simple improvement that you're looking at, even though building addition.
And Zach, could you go back one? Is, is the construction along that corridor that we see there, is that, is that where it is?
That's the same area, the same area where it's temporary.
Okay.
Is going to be permanent.
So where we're seeing.
The rear of the building. Yeah, more or less.
So where we're seeing the tarp is, is going to become.
That's exactly right.
A full brick and mortar building.
Yes.
That'll extend, it'll extend to the right of that picture.
Correct.
Said, I'm Neil Caymans with Chester Valley Engineers. To help you understand how we got here, Charles River used to occupy part of the building and they expanded in a couple steps to take over the entire building. So when their clean room used to be at the end of their space, they now have regular office space on both sides of the clean room. And that's why they have to go outside so that they can get from one part of the like administrative part of their space to the other. Um, the sidewalk is where Zach has his, the sidewalk question, Zach has the little pointer with the plus in it. Along Technology Drive. And when we were at the planning commission, Zach brought up a, a Google street view, which was better than any individual photo we've taken. So if we give him a couple of minutes to get that, I can show it to you. But, um, the, the main issue there is that there's a relatively steep grade from Technology Drive up to the parking lot. Um, it includes a retaining wall that was built when they built the parking lot. There are also quite a few utilities in that area. So it's not really a question of would you build a sidewalk for X dollars? It's would you change the retaining wall, grade the area, relocate a bunch of utilities to make it flat enough? And spend, you know, I don't know what the number is, but many times that to construct the sidewalk. Like the other sidewalks we've talked about, it doesn't really connect anything. Um, right now there is not another sidewalk along Technology Drive or Lap Road in that area. So that's the area where the question about the sidewalk is along there. So you can see the retaining wall. And while it doesn't look that steep, it's much steeper than would be acceptable to put the sidewalk up from the curb. So to get a sidewalk in there at two percent, we would have to grade out that area. And you can see some of the little utility risers on some of the utilities. So if we tried to cut that in to make it a sidewalk that had like a two to four foot grass strip, we'd probably have to move some utilities or lower utilities. And we can't really extend the existing wall down. We'd have to remove the wall and replace it.
At the end of that road, is there a, is there a bus route on the parallel road?
I am not sure. I know there are bus stops on Great Valley Parkway. But I don't know that the bus comes down here. I don't know if.
They're changing all the bus routes for the corporate center. Actually, this will be like more of an on demand, kind of less fixed route. There are routes in the area like Neil said, but I think going forward, they're kind of moving away from that fixed route system for this area.
Yeah. My only question is if you've got an employee who rides the bus and is leaving that campus, you know, how are they going to get to that? That intersection? With the steep slope and no sidewalks.
But there's none there now. Is that right? There's none there now.
That is correct. That's a view of what it looks like today. I would also add, I mean, this might be obvious, if we were developing this from scratch today, we would certainly think that we needed to have a sidewalk along the road, even if it didn't connect to anything else. So we're not, neither, neither Warren Avenue, who owns the property or Charles River thinks it's a bad idea. Just with the scope of our improvement being enclosing that, it does not seem to be a reasonable thing to include on this scope of a project.
So there is a, there is a bus stop at the corner of Technology and Great Valley. But I, and Neil may have just said this even, to get up to there from this, you have to go around another property where it gets even, it's actually gets a little sketchier to be honest, from an engineering standpoint, but. Yes, there's one uphill, but then you have to figure out a way to get around all this fun stuff here. So.
I mean, when the Philly suburban development goes in at the bottom of Lap Road with connection to the park, still to put one sidewalk here with no other leading from here all the way down to lap. I don't know if that makes much sense. Odds are people are gonna not walk, but maybe drive over to the park during lunch. Cause by the time you walk from here to the parking back, your lunch is over.
We did talk about this with a little bit, with the planning commission on similar, like nearby projects. And there's no sidewalks anywhere in this section, but so there's been, there's a development here at this corner now, Builders Inc. They have deferred their sidewalk along the south side. Point is, I think ultimately if there's a sidewalk in this area, it'd be on the south side, probably of technology, sort of around the outside. Could then connect to Knickerbocker and elsewhere, but it, we should be kind of, this is probably an area we should be selective as to where we put it, where people cross, et cetera. And not just, you know, put it up to put it up. I'm usually the sidewalk zealot, but I think this is a tough spot.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Anything else?
Any other questions about what we're proposing?
Yep, I'm all right. Fine.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the request for waiver of land development. WLD sixteen twenty twenty-three for three fifty-eight Technology Drive.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three O and passes. Thank you. And Zach, if you can give us, I forgot I was still up, four B for Barbara out there in.
Oh yeah, I actually skipped ahead. Sorry about that. So there's a, an offer of extension for Bishop Tube to carry it beyond the current April thirtieth deadline to render a decision until June thirtieth. At last month's meeting, Mr. Orlo suggested that we kind of hold off since we had some time to wait and see if there was any new developments, any resubmissions. There has been no resubmission. I understand that some of the legal aspects are proceeding. Um, but we don't really have a definitive update on timing of some of those things at this point. So really not much new since last month, unfortunately.
Any public comments? Come on down. Speak loudly.
Yep. Good evening. Barbara Arnold, thirty-one Fonstock Road. Um, I know this is probably going to be continued, but I, I did just want to mention to you guys, PFAS has been in the news a lot lately. And there was actually a story in the New York Times today. The headline was EPA says forever chemicals like PFAS must be removed from tap water. So, you know, if you, if you Google PFAS, you're going to see a lot of stuff that's, you know, recently in the news. And there was a quote from the article I thought was interesting. It says, "A growing body of scientific research shows PFAS chemicals are more harmful to human health than previously thought and at extremely low levels." So even less of it than they previously thought is harmful to us. So, you know, if, if chemicals like PFAS and the TCE that we know are at the Bishop Tube site are harmful, you know, just, just to drink and the EPA wants them removed from tap water. You know, imagine how harmful they'll be if your house is on top of it, if it's in the soil where you're living, if it's, you know, in the air because it's coming up through the soil. So, you know, I just wanted to kind of leave you guys with that impression and as you're again, going through your decision-making process. Uh, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Barbara. Donna, any public? Peter, Rich, any additional questions?
No, I have no additional.
Do you want to make a motion for extension?
Yeah, I think it is under the circumstances at the moment. Uh, would be premature to do anything other than accept the extension. Of the time by which we need to make a decision until June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. And it's extended. These are. Sure.
If, right now, the current, um, plan is, uh, it's, they have to, they have till April thirtieth. If they don't submit anything by April thirtieth, would that automatically mean that they, like what would, what would be the, the issue there?
If we didn't extend to June and nothing, it turned out that nothing was submitted until April thirty, we would have realized that and we would have had to take an action before April thirty. Not taking an action is a deemed approval. So we would have had to have another meeting between now and then.
Right.
And take action.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Correct. Yes. Yeah. Nothing about their submission, like a resubmission affects the extension. The second extension is for Gray Star. This is the apartment redevelopment of a portion of the corporate center along twenty-nine, South of Great Valley Parkway. They are offering an extension until June thirteenth. We recently received a resubmission. It's under review. They intend to be on the April planning commission. Believe they'll be seeking a recommendation. I do not know that they'll be ready for it, but the reviews will provide more insights on that.
Are there any representatives from Gray Star here?
Nope. Just an extension. They don't, they're, they weren't.
Sure.
Present anything this evening. I, I guess.
Juneteenth is the date of our June meeting. That's how they chose them, I guess.
I usually ask for the last day of the month and there's a certain attorney that likes to give us the day of the meeting.
Really? Okay. Okay.
You, you, I think you may know him. I'm not sure, but you may recognize him if you saw him.
I'm sure he's taking direction from the client.
Lawyers. One just question I have to ask is this property is, has found its way on the MLP. It's up for sale.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't catch that part. I'm sorry. What was that?
It's up for sale. It just went up for sale. What type of impact would a sale have on this whole process?
Were, are we talking about the same property? This is the Philly suburban, great, like not just.
I got the wrong one.
Yeah.
Forgive me. Never mind. That's not the right.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the property that you're referring to. That's, there's, that's not on the agenda this evening.
Yep. Okay. Never mind.
Should I make a motion?
So.
Make a motion?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the time to render decision for the Gray Star Apartments in the Great Valley Corporate Center.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And passes.
Similar. Next one, Green Figs, the data center proposed on Sweetsford Road. Uh, they have offered an extension to June thirtieth. We recently got their resubmission. It is under review. They intend to be on the April planning commission meeting. They've been working with our acoustic consultant to refine the plans and add some, uh, sound barriers and other items, operational controls to minimize impacts to surrounding properties. So that's kind of the, the real action in between these submissions on this case.
Nothing major. Any questions anywhere out there? Rich?
None.
Would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion to, this is an extension of the time again, right?
Yes.
Extend the time until June thirty, twenty twenty-four to take action on the preliminary plan. It's only preliminary, not preliminary final.
Is currently filed as a preliminary plan.
So we'll stick with that for now. Okay.
Yeah, a second?
Nothing. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. All right, Zach.
Yep. Next item, this is for, um, it's actually just a waiver. Oh no, I'm sorry. This is, this is a previously approved project by waiver of land development. It's the, it's a parking expansion for the shopping center, um, where the PTOL hands is located, um, actually in Charlestown, part of it's in our township. So we essentially deferred the land development review to them. There's been some changes to the plans to comply with conservation district comments and Charlestown comments. There's been some changes to the plans to comply with Conservation District comments and Charlestown comments. So basically what's before the board tonight is just a request for a waiver to not require infiltration on the site because of known karsten geologic issues and potential to form sinkholes. Uh, so that power rests with the board to waive the stormwater ordinance, so that's really all that's before you tonight. The, the plans are substantially the same otherwise.
And this is close enough to all the sinkholes that over time have been developing on Route twenty-nine, right?
Yeah, that's a good point. I hadn't thought of that, but this, this is right in, well, the, just north of the area that had it a couple of years ago and a little further north than the recent ones, but yeah. Yeah, this is, uh, fully supported by staff and Al, uh, we just don't think it's a, a wise idea.
Agreed.
Makes sense. Any questions, Donna? All right, Peter, would you like to make a motion?
I would, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, uh, allow waiver of storm water management from, from the, from the stormwater management ordinance, uh, WD for WD dash eleven dash twenty twenty-one for ten and twelve General Warren Boulevard parking expansion. Waiver from section one seventy dash three oh six.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. And passes.
That was the applicant? The next item, yes, this is just a presentation of a sketch plan. We've been talking, you know, in previous months, we wanted to give the board an opportunity to look at plans earlier in the process and provide feedback. This is a good example of that. Uh, so the applicant, uh, the applicant's engineer is here to sort of just give the board a, a brief presentation.
Thank you, Tom Newman, License Engineer with Dynamic Engineering on behalf of Malvern Educational Properties. I have reduced sized copies of the sketch plan, like, um. So the property in question is located at Forty Third Avenue, State Route thirty. Uh, in its current condition, it is developed with a former Friendly's restaurant and associated parking with some fringe landscape areas. Uh, where, we need to do a detailed Alta survey of the property, but it's my understanding that there's currently no stormwater management controls on the property for the existing building and associated parking lot. Our application proposes to demolish the existing structure and parking and to redevelop it with a ten thousand six hundred square foot two-story daycare facility with thirty-five associated parking stalls, as well as code compliant stormwater management landscaping, associated site improvements. We submitted the subject sketch application and received comments from the township engineer and the township traffic engineer. Uh, they're pretty boilerplate at this point, um, nothing of significance that we haven't fully engineered plans. And, uh, we still complete our complete traffic study. But given the merits of the sketch plan, we just wanted to present it in front of the board tonight and kind of open it up if there's any high-level questions as we look forward to proceeding with land development.
Uh, I'm excited about the possibility of the reuse of that land. Uh, obviously the, the rub is the traffic of getting in and out of it.
Is it realistic to get a left turn in over there, Chris?
So I can speak briefly.
In, not, not out, right?
I can speak briefly, that there is a highway occupancy permit that was permitted and approved for the left turn movement in, off of State Route thirty that's shown on our sketch plan. That was for a different tenant, uh, for a restaurant use. We're obviously coming in with a daycare. So we need to re-go through the motions with PennDOT, submit a new traffic impact study that satisfies the township comments as well as PennDOT's comments. But it, it has been previously approved, so, you know, we're, we're proceeding with that intent as part of our land development plans, but it'll obviously have to be vetted and approved, uh, as part of the highway occupancy permit.
The, the other pro, yeah, it looks great. I mean, the left lane, left turn in from the eastbound is great. It is, uh, the, the rub with the property is the, uh, left turn out. That's where, where, uh, it's a real problem and I'd love to hear a solution to that.
Yeah, I mean, certainly we're completing our traffic evaluation at this time and certainly plan to be able to speak to that in more detail at the land development process. Um, there is a channelized median, uh, that currently restricts left-out movements from this property. So you cannot make a left out of this property and the intent of this sketch plan showing it currently is not left out. So yes, it would only be a, a right out movement returning westbound onto Route thirty.
Peter, was your comment more about like the left turn, like how does someone go back east without that?
My comment was exactly to address that because what inherently always happens is they go westbound and then make a left into a business and impact.
Right.
Parking lots and businesses by doing a U-turn in, uh, McDonald's, Antonio's or the strip there and impacting them. So there, there, there's concern with that and it's, it's an unfortunate.
Yeah, and, and worm receipt of that comment was noted in the township traffic engineer. Fully plan to be prepared to speak about that in more detail and offer, uh, potential solutions.
Does this parcel access connect to the other parcels in there, you know, the, uh, which is now Pickleball and the hotel? Still a hotel, I think, and, uh, and the play place behind it?
As currently depicted on our sketch plan, there, there's no interconnectivity shown. Uh, we're, we're still waiting to complete our Alta title survey, which will have a full title report that would note any existing cross-access agreements or easements that may be in place from neighboring property owners. Um, we just don't have the privilege of knowing that without.
Sure. Is this part of the, is this a condominium?
This is not part of a condominium, this is a, a single, singles, separate lot, not associated with the, the Pickleball.
All right, you'll find out easy enough. Yep, okay.
That driveway that's shown there, just to the right of what they're showing, it's actually a flag that goes back to Grand Slam and I think there's cross-access from the condo onto that. So it's, it's a little convoluted in there already as we know, so.
Not being an injur, engineer, but my two senses, similar to what Peter was indicating in terms of concern, the left turn onto, on the Route thirty. I mean, if there's some way that you could end up having in, in and out access from the rear of the property and then have an exit east onto twenty-nine, I don't know if that was looked at and there's easement issues or property issues that might impact that.
Certainly would require cross-access easements. I, I get from a traffic planning perspective, this would allow you then to go out to twenty-nine sort of the other way. Like ideally, that would be the case, but they would need to resolve that with the, probably multiple property owners at, at this point.
Yeah. Again, I.
Yeah, totally agree with the point.
Again, I, little, little concerned with the, the fact that you'll have, you'll have high traffic concentration probably at peak times on that travel on that road. You know, with traffic, so it, it's gonna, it's gonna add to it. So if you can dig deeper into that solution in the back.
Absolutely, yeah.
It might behoove you to do that.
Mm-hmm. We're gonna explore all avenues as we get into full plans. Um, we're working just off available GIS.
Yeah.
Can you say is it part of, is it part of a franchise operation or is it singly owned?
Uh, it's the learning experience. Uh, they have other operations elsewhere and throughout the state and so, um, yeah, they're, they're the proposed applicant, well, Malvern Educational is developing on behalf of T.
And I'm sorry, how, how many students would there be?
So it's intended that there would be up to one hundred and sixty-seven students at, uh, enrolled in the facility. That does not mean that one hundred and sixty-seven would be there all day during hours of operation. There are certain students that may only be there for morning hours or may only be there for afternoon hours. Um, but operationally, that's consistent with their other location, uh, what they've been able to.
And then, and then how many, um, staff-wise?
Twenty-one employees is what's intended to be employed by the facility. Again, not all twenty-one would be necessarily on staff at all times, but, uh, twenty-one employees.
Wowza, okay.
I mean, next steps for us, uh, we're actively working on the, the traffic impact study, getting counts, working on preparing, um, more detailed assessment that we would submit as part of the land development application. And we're also looking to get out and come, Alta field survey and, you know, pull the title. All of that would, uh, be completed and, you know, that again, when our office would look to submit a preliminary final land development application at that time. And also include responses to the township that were received as part of the sketch plan process.
Another, uh, offhanded comment I'm gonna make is that I would assume that you folks are aware that within, uh, a nine iron away from your building is another building that has gun resale? Are you aware of that?
I can't speak to that specifically on behalf of the applicant. Um, I mean, I know that they've done their market research and, you know, they're excited to pursue an opportunity in East White Land. Uh, whether that was specifically evaluated, I, I can't do, but, um, it's certain, something I can proceed with land development.
I think it's worth at least mentioning to them.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Sounds good, thank you.
Good job. All right, zoning and code enforcement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the zoning hearing board meeting for April has been canceled. The next scheduled meeting is set for Tuesday, May twenty-first, which will include the application of the Great Valley School District who is presently amending their application. The meeting will be advertised, notice is sent to all parties, and the application will again be made and, and supporting documents will again be made available, uh, on our website after it is, they are received. Uh, under code enforcement updates, um, on the rental, uh, rental occupancy reports, over two hundred single-family homes have been registered as rental units in response to our request for rental occupancy reports as required by the Township Code. Staff is presently working on a system to maintain a database for these and all multifamily and commercial rental units throughout the township. Uh, at this time, we'd like to remind residents of the code enforcement rules on certain issues that arise, arise with the arrival of nicer weather. The adopted township property maintenance code requires grass and weeds to be maintained and grass is allowed to grow no higher than eight inches as required by the adopted International Property Maintenance Code. Trash and garbage are required to be kept in receptacles with lids being placed out for collection no sooner than six PM on the day preceding and left out no later than five PM on the day following collection. Also, we'd like to remind residents that burning is prohibited throughout the township with the exception of burning of clean wood that must, that must be done in an approved container on private properties, which are, which can only be used when there is a sub twenty-five foot setback from any surrounding buildings and, and also twenty-five foot setback from any property lines. Thank you.
John, as, as we get into a mowing season, what, what, what's it, eight o'clock the earliest you could rev up your lawnmower?
It, it's, it's basically like the, uh, uh, limits on, uh, uh, ti, hours of operation for construction.
Yeah.
Be seven AM on weekdays.
Seven.
Yes, till nine PM and nine AM on Saturdays and Sundays until same hour at, at night.
Yeah, stay in bed. Um, okay, thank you.
Can I ask, uh, where the school may be on the LED sign, John? Do you know?
We have no idea. We did not get, uh, sent an updated, um, application to let us know what they're gonna be requesting.
But they're amending the application somehow, we just don't know how.
I, I, I heard they were making it the Peter Fixler LED sign off of Phoenix Hill Parkway. You know, I, I'm impressed that you're able to get your name on that.
I didn't, I didn't even ask.
The Fixler LED, dark. Seven years and I don't even have a LED sign.
Maybe I won't oppose it then.
I think that was the plan, I think that was the plan. Uh, public comment. Okay, moving on. Um, consent agenda, which I will read in its entirety. Stop me if you have any questions. Otherwise, here we go. Eight A. Approve the meeting minutes from March thirteen, twenty twenty-four. Ratify payment of bills in the amount of, I've got an old one that doesn't have the number. I have a lot of X's on mine.
Oh.
Oh, wow. One million, one million three.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, Usha, how much is it?
If you can read this card.
Oh, it's a one million, three hundred eighty-five thousand, six hundred, six hundred seventy-three point nine three.
That's good, all right, as read by Usha. Um, C, accept the treasurer's report as of February twenty twenty-four. D, ratify and appoint United Inspections as a third-party electrical inspection agency for twenty twenty-four. Consider approval of township park policy waiver related to park operating hours for summer concert series. Approve the payment to DBS Audio Systems for summer concert in the amount of XXX, seven thousand dollars. Consider approval to enter into agreement with workspace for permission to park vehicles on one County View Road property for the summer concert series and the movie night in Valley Creek Park. H, consider approval to enter into an agreement for township identification with Locust Lane Brewing to permit sales of alcohol at summer concert series and movie night in Valley Creek Park. I consider waiver of township park policy related to alcohol for summer concert series and movie night in Valley Creek. Approve payment to Rising Sun Presents for the summer concert series for seven thousand dollars. An X sense. Approve first payment to Armore and Sons Electric for the Route twenty-nine Traffic Signal Performance Measures Project or the Green Light Go Grant for the amount of two hundred and thirty. or the Green Light Go Grant for the amount of two hundred and thirty-five thousand one hundred and five dollars and fifty cents. Um, any questions or?
You read that wrong, the amount.
What did I say? Two, three, five, one, zero, two, point, five, zero, for the record. But who's counting?
I'd like to make a motion.
Any questions? Nope. All right, so. Please make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes. Thank you for giving me the numbers.
We are adjourned.
And at this. And at this point in time, meeting is adjourned.
Adjourned. Very good.